Do you normally have that lamp in the background?
Well, not normally.
Oh, okay.
Is it just a different angle?
It's like super, super zoomed out because it's on that device. Good morning! Yeah, I might have to do something to that because that's really weird. Ah! I printed out all my practice tests and all my stuff, so I'm like, "All my stuff today." It's so weird, you'll have to, I'll fix it. Let me get it like loaded up to where I can see, like I'll put my laptop up. Morning! I'm such a morning person, I can just tell already. Like compared to how I normally am, I guess. Hello? I'm gonna just pull up chat here in a second. Oh, yes, I love that. Recreated that Snorlax. It looks exactly the same as yours. It's funny. Oh my gosh, it's so crazy, okay. It's like catching that light thingy, and I think it's crooked. It's really high though. This is what it looks like.
Yeah, it's just gonna be, it's normally like the top of my head.
Okay, so we want to do like this? Is that what you're saying?
No, the opposite.
Oh, more like this?
Not that far.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, it still looks crooked though. Wow, the phone makes it so hard.
It's so weird!
It's fine, we went live fifteen minutes early, so you could spend fifteen minutes figuring this out.
It's really easy to like move it, see like this? Oh my gosh, look how straight it is, it's lined up with the lamp. Oh my gosh, look how straight it is!
I'm gonna hit that.
Inception!
I don't think I need to change any settings, you've got some good settings going on.
I don't have, I have an-
DNA and drive to campus car.
Yeah.
This looks fun.
Morning!
I'm not as much of a morning person, oh, that's a great call. Yell Pot, good morning.
Hello, I'm Reggie. How are you so early, what the fuck, um, because Alexa? Because Alexa.
It's not early, it's almost 7pm.
Okay, do we want like a bold?
Not that aggressive of a filter, what are we trying to do here?
Well, it's, there's a delay, so it's, I can't, I'm trying to watch. That one's weird.
Kinda yeah, just go back to-
Oh, that one's weird.
What's that one, right there?
More than just a drink, you look so washed out in that one.
Damn you right fam, change that, just go back to the beginning and pick the second one in.
Oh no, I went in the, in the other one we had.
Oh yeah, well that one was super-
Oh, but look at this one! Oh, that's sick!
Yes, that's what I'd like to show you today, covered in bubbles, in fact-
Ooh, what about this?
Is there one where the camera's just turned off?
We can put a nice, ooh, old fashioned border, I have to wait for the delay, hold on.
But the whole screen is gonna be like glitching the whole time?
Oh, that's cool though.
It's annoying.
Okay.
Oh, I wish I was old timey, but like I'm not, I just wanna be an old timey faker.
Oh my gosh, what about this?
Yes, that's the one I want, I want that one.
Sick.
I want it right now, this is perfect.
I can't even see anything, look how real that looks.
Look how perfect that is, just watch some shapes, study.
Practice for the PAT, we're watching shapes today.
Guess who's who?
Okay, so we probably want to do like this one.
Yeah, that one's good.
I like, I, I mean, it's sort of washed out, but it's... Well, I don't know, this one seems good though too, no, that's dark.
That one was fine.
Okay, final answer, this one? Or no?
Yeah, this one's fine, the light fixture is throwing me off because it looks like it's a border that's like-
Wrong.
Yeah, here it's a fixed, okay.
Okay.
As long as it's like clearly a lamp, I'm not a border that's wrong all the time.
Okay. Okay, it's, it's okay. Hello! Oh, forgot to put that down. It seems so dark in that actual like view or whatever, but it's bright everywhere else. Okay, cool, here we are, early as can be. Let's see, what am I doing today? I'm gonna review some chem today, I think.
Katie takes some frickies on, sorry.
I already, I bought breakfast, brought breakfast.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I've got turkey bacon sandwiches. I've got yogurt parfaits.
It's a little early, don't you think?
It's a little early?
For food, I don't eat this early, I eat it like two.
Eleven, like it's literally almost lunch.
I mean, okay, I'd never eat until like one, whenever I wake up, because I, you know, just, I'm an early person. You work as an early person's job for adults and humans.
It's totally fine, okay, here's your coffee, caramel macchiato with coconut milk, yes?
Glad.
Exposed.
Honestly, I've tried getting coconut milk, um, at, at Dutch and it's not good, but coconut milk at Starbies is really good still, they're-
What is it about Starbies?
You know, it's just consistent, maybe. It, well, not always, because sometimes they burn a coffee, so I don't know, I've never had like an issue with that level of consistency at Dutch, but like-
That-
They can't make anything that's like special without fucking it completely up, you know? They can only make what they know, at Starbies if I'm like, "Oh, I want a coconut milk with extra caramel," or whatever the fuck, then it'll fit, it'll be perfect every time. Why is it just me and not you?
Well...
Here we go. Spotlight special.
Hi!
I like this Snorlax thumbnail, oh, just see like how tall it is still?
It does seem tall.
Did you just tilt this guy up?
Why don't you bring his neck up higher? Like pull him up. Up, 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 up.
Why?
Pull it way up and then you can tilt it.
Well, I don't want to do that, it's too much.
Okay. Well, here's what you're looking at. Don't tilt that part, you can just grab the phone and tilt it, it's on like a tilter arm. That's crooked.
Really?
Yeah.
Look at the table though.
The windowsill.
Well, look at the table though.
Well, do you want the table to be straight or the windowsill to be straight?
The floor in here is crooked, I try to tell people this, nobody's listening.
It's, it's like over, it's over there, like it's on an angle, that's why it looks like that, if you put it right in the, if you put it in the middle of the table, the table would be straight.
Well, it must have pretty shit, the floor is crooked.
Well, okay.
Bothness. OMG, OMG, GTG, bye, okay, bye, yell pot. I don't know what's happening with your life, or mine to be, to be honest.
How are you so early? WTF?
Time for a sandwich! Wow, this one's like really-
Excuse me.
Your braids are adorable, I love it.
Thanks!
Oh my gosh, I got stuck. Love that, where's mine? What is this? Turkey bacon.
It's a turkey bacon breakfast sandwich. Okay, pretty good. Is that Ryan with an R-I-A-N? Hello, good evening. I'm glad you're here, Reggie, I need to mod in chat, you know? I told him I wanted to make him mod on Twitch and then I didn't stream on Twitch for ten days, and he's like, "Oh, I see how it is." There, now I can, and there I can have. You betcha! So I have class today, um, but I'm going to be here until class, and then going to class, and then in class, and then after class, we're gonna be here again.
In fact, while I'm in class, you should just take this with you into a room.
Just keep it live the whole day?
Why not?
Alright.
That same classroom we always, like, you always study at is empty then, I don't see why not.
Was your laptop in the same place it always is?
Wednesday special.
So we have six minutes before we have to start our timer. But before we do, there was a big announcement about Pokemon, Sword and Shield?
Yes.
It's gonna be released on November 15th, did you see anything about that?
No, but I logged into Steven's stream ten minutes ago and he was talking about it. He was like, "Oh, good thing you're here, I was just talking about the Pokemon announcement," and I was like, "Damn, I'm outta, I'm outta the loop."
It just happened, there's a bunch of channels that are live talking about it right now, like-
Yeah, he was doing that.
Pokemon channels and other stuff like that.
So what is the announcement?
That it's coming out on November 15th.
Oh, we already knew it was coming out this year, but they wait, now they're gonna give us an official date?
Yeah, and then-
That's gonna be November, wow.
The other thing is like-
Thanks for really working hard, I'm getting that out fast.
Okay, no, no need to hate. I think there was also a lot about, like, these are the two legendary Pokemon, so that's Sword and that's Shield.
Oh, that's right, that wasn't determined yet.
So it's like what, um-
So you're seeing Zamasenta. See, I wanna be Shield, so I'm actually really stoked because Zamasenta looks amazing. I don't know this far into the... Like you guys know that, like, as, after fourth gen, I'm out of it, you know? And I'm only sort of into fourth gen specifically because of Pokemon Go, prior to that, it was like third gen and I'm done. Like I played Emerald a bunch of times. And the first one, a couple times, yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Pokemon Go is the tits, uh, but as far as Pokemon games go, I'm pretty out of the loop, so-
So you want Shield?
That's what I, yeah, I said that like a couple months ago. I was like, "Shield would be great," I don't know that, I was just-
Sword is prettier, but Shield is more aggressive, I feel like he'd be a better battler.
His name is literally like a shield, like you think he'd be not a more defensive as opposed to more aggressive?
I don't know, this one looks like a sweet, soft little fairy boy.
Holding a sword in his mouth.
I guess.
As long as it gets you.
Those are the ones that-
No, I don't know, it's just, um-
It looks cool, I'm super excited.
I don't know anything about it, so when I said that, I was just like, "Well, this one looks the coolest right now."
You're gonna be so busy this fall, because you're gonna be in physics, and you're gonna be trying to play Pokemon every day.
True. Hi, cool gamer, I played Yellow and Diamond, I've heard that the series died for you, yeah, exactly, um, anyways, so... Maybe we should watch that reaction video. What did I say I wanted to get Shield versus Sword?
Don't know. I just remember you like telling me about it.
Co-op raids. It's coming out on the Switch, so excited, God, Region of Galore? 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 I haven't changed too much since the beginning, come with co-op. Raids are new, during max raid battles, your friends will fight against powerful Pokemon for a chance to catch rare. You'll be able to play with four friends in person or online. These Pokemon will also appear big and super powerful, which is a new mechanic called Dynamaxing. Okay, it's not a new mechanic as far as Pokemon Go is concerned though, because every time you battle a raid boss in a gym, it is giant regardless of the specific Pokemon that it is. I could go down the street right now to a Raiku raid and that Raiku's gonna be ten times the size of my Grudon.
Oh, like it shows up in the arena, you know?
Yeah, yeah. But here, it's, I think this is the first time in game they're doing that, so they're, now they have a name for it, it's called Dynamaxing. A Pokemon will appear super big and super powerful.
Oh! Oh.
Makes them huge and turns all their moves into powerful Z moves for three turns, okay, okay.
Okay, well... Your hair looks great today.
Thank you. I blew it out yesterday.
What do you mean by that?
It means it's-
Like you, you crunched it and you blew it out?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Which means it's good for like two days of blowout.
Love it!
It's high plan.
Hey, Tony, how are ya?
Onslaught of new Pokemon. Galar's Aegix, base in the End of Kingdom. Wulu.
Two-minute countdown. Sorry.
There's a Wulu sheet, look at a sheet Pokemon, Wulu. Flower.
Gossip Flor. Ooh, that looks like me!
Did you see that? Dreadnought, look at this big jaw, this looks like you.
Cause the red hair that flips out.
Oh, it's just a floating head with red hair, okay. And a hat, you have to get it, I guess. Dreadnought. Some kind of crow without a name. An ad for Spotify, okay, Eldar, a cotton bloom.
Why is there only one diploma behind you next to the pony?
Because I live here, this is my house, and that's my diploma, Alexa's two diplomas are at her house, on her wall.
There you have it! My diplomas are at home, actually, I'm waiting on, remember, I have to get new, uh-
Oh yeah, she took hers off, her masters off the wall because she wanted to put it in a new box.
I, uh, the, yeah, the, anyways. Mine doesn't, mine didn't come in a little thing like yours did, I framed it, you know?
You just got like a paper?
You know, I might have got, honestly, I don't remember. I just wanted to put him in like a shadow box kind of thing.
Right.
Yay, boring Pokemon stuff.
Oh, who said that? You were out of my league!
Oh my gosh. I put on Bunks season four last night, when I woke up, it was the last episode.
Wow, it just played all night?
Yeah.
Wow.
Love it, wait, was it, it was... Well, whatever season it was, it was the first one with, with Natalie. Is that four? I think it's four.
Yeah. Oh, Tony's being rude today, love that.
You're boring, sorry.
Mostly that's funny. Oop, it's 11:01!
Oh, start the timer.
I loved your thumbnail.
Thanks. Parrot, do some work. Um, okay, you ready?
I'm ready.
Software update. Will be auto-installed, okay.
Your phone's doing an update.
Right at this moment? Oh, tonight. Well, it's probably fine, right? Alright, here we go. What are you sitting this morning?
I'm going to be doing two bio lectures.
Okay. I would like to make some no cards, can I have some of yours? Hi, Manix.
Hi, Chaney.
Hello, good morning!
Good morning!
Getting started early today. Are you able to grab me like a stack of them, they're right over?
Okay.
Hi, Yinko. Thank you! Is there hair on my chapstick? And a snake in my boots! She will be back shortly. Can you set a timer at least?
I can't set one here, but I can just set one.
Oh, oh, that's right, okay. I'm like, we need to set the timer, I've been on this thing for six minutes.
I can't set, you wanna, oh, I guess that's fine, just sit in there, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know. Probably.
How about that? Timer? Me too, Ginkgo, that's the first thing I said when I walked in.
Hey, thanks man! Appreciate it. Really driving to campus, that cool, super high-tech? I mean, I guess, just in a car. You are gonna give yourself a friggin' heart attack, stop, freaking monster! Reggie, two cans of Monster already, that's so much!
Well, for him, it's eight o'clock at night.
So he's like at the end, no, he's been only at work at-
Well, he's a night shifter, so yeah, he'll be up for the next-
Almost an hour, only one hour.
Okay, so you're maybe guzzling them a bit fast today, but I've definitely had two in a day, just, you know. I do always get the like sugar-free ones though, I feel better about myself just because there's not so much sugar. But it isn't, I mean, there's still the same amount of caffeine, so...
Okay, how about we'll say 11:50?
Yep.
Okay. Nice, Sebastian.
Alright, everyone start your timers.
For 11:50. There we go.
My headphones are dead, I'm gonna make it charge accordingly.
The phones dead?
My headphones.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Ooh, look at that. Sticky's over here by me. No.
They are not in here.
You could not steal them. Excuse me, weren't they like...
They were here, um...
Here?
Aye, there you go.
Did I miss anything exciting, you guys? When raindrops fell down from the sky, Then you left me an angel cry. Morning. Morning, solitary. Are you gonna call me Jigglybug now? Yeah, I had Ocean Waves playing. Hi, Pen.
Hi, Chrome. What's up, you guys? I just found a feather in my pants.
Is it that pillow you're sitting on?
We're sitting on this feather pillow.
So I was trying to tell you, it's like, sometimes it gets kinda pokey. So I don't know if you wanna... Like yesterday when you grabbed it or something, I was like, "Okay."
It woven way in my underwear. Love that for you.
I do too. Hi, Chrome. Welcome. How's it going? I did not catch it, MRG.
I did catch it. It says, "I miss you."
Cute.
Or something like that. "I missed you."
Dude, right? Are those braided adorbs? Okay, just working. I feel that.
The lady in the black can't sit still. She's disturbing Alexa.
I was really restless quite at the beginning, but I did make it through an entire bio lecture just now.
Nice. Sick.
So that was nice. They are exactly... They're forty-nine minutes long. But there's sections where there's like clicker questions and pauses, so I can like skip a little bit ahead.
Yeah, nice.
That works out really good. When raindrops fell down from the sky, The day you left me.
Aw, thank you. Hey, had to get out of the house quickly with wet hair today, so.
So, um, I'm realizing, I'm going through my Assassin's Creed footage, cuz I wanna upload it to YouTube, cuz it's like a long play game that I finished, and I put like sixty, seventy hours in, in a row.
Yeah.
I wanna say more than that, but, I don't know. Anyways, um, apparently this specific one five-hour stream, I had song requests on. So, that's fine. I don't need like monetization, like, that's fine. But there's, so, so there's fifty songs listed in this video with copyright, you know, and they're like, "Oh, add revenue paid to the owner." Like, that's fine, that's fine. It doesn't affect your channel, it just tells you like, you can't monetize, you know? But then, there's one song right here in the middle called "When Doves Cry" by Prince. Whatever copyright restrictions Prince has on his music, he's dead. Whatever's happening with Prince, I know that. But like, whatever copyright restrictions are on his music,
Sure.
I can't post it at all. This one song, video cannot be seen. Also, this one song down here.
Oh, no!
There's only two out of this list of fifty songs. "Luck Be a Lady" by Frank Sinatra.
Oh.
And then "Radar Love" by Golden Earring.
Oh.
The original edit from seventy-three. So those three songs. I don't either. Those three songs make... I can't post the video, cuz no one can view it. So it's like, I can come in here and ask YouTube to erase the song, but every time I click that, it takes me to a four oh four page. Like, so I'm gonna have to download this five-hour video and listen to the whole thing through.
Wait for that song.
And listen for "Luck Be a Lady." Can I like, is there like some kind of?
No.
I don't think there is. Some kinda software that I can be like that?
Mm-hmm. MRG, mm-hmm.
Had.
Okay, so we have to leave for school at twelve forty-five.
All my Assassin's Creed stuff is all fine, except that one day, I must've just been like in a mood, because I turned on music. I don't know.
Yeah.
But there's just three songs listed out of all the songs for the five-hour day of music. They're all fine. I can play the video, no problem, except those three songs.
But you have to cut out all the... Oh, no, I see what you're saying.
Nothing else triggered. Nothing else triggered the copyright.
Yeah.
Can in a mood, that never happens. Like, so I have to sit down and watch this five-hour video and like listen to it for like "Luck Be a Lady." I don't even know what "Golden Love," "Radar..."
Luck be a lady tonight.
Yeah, like, I can always find that song pretty, well, not pretty easy, I would have to watch five hours of it.
Easy way to do it. Make Steven do it.
He actually asked if he could help with editing the other day, but I don't wanna just dump a five-hour video on him and say, "Hey, when you hear 'When Doves Cry,' let me know." You know, like, that's such a shitty thing to ask. I love playing Beat Saber, but my Twitch pods always get muted. Yeah, same with like, well, actually Twitch sings if you... So if you stream through the Twitch sings app and upload your songs per song during your stream, they'll leave it up there, it won't be muted. But it's because it's like the official Twitch sings karaoke version, which is why I think Grease's summer, while they're not taken down, it must've like stepped on somebody's toes somewhere, I'm not sure. Yeah, from, that's why half the time when I started Twitch sings song, I don't know what the hell's going on, because it uses like a different version. It's like a different karaoke version that I don't know. And I'll go off on this like, "Nanana ba ba," and I'm like, "Oh, that's not at all."
Too much, too much.
Too much oomph.
Fresh.
Like, I don't... Hi, Donatello, what's up?
When raindrops fall down from the sky.
Like, I have finals, I don't have time to sit down and watch this five-hour Assassin's Creed video.
How did she get to sing? Like, how did she get to perform that song? It's from...
Her entire album. I mean, look at Seven Rings.
I know.
She had to pay up the ass for that.
You think she just like paid him off?
Oh, definitely, definitely. You have a meeting with your lawyers, and they lawyers, and you ask for permission.
Raindrops fall. Where is that originally?
They probably get a cut. Sound of Music.
Frankie Valli.
Oh, yours is Frankie Valli. Seven Rings is from Sound of Music.
I mean, yeah, I knew that part. Do you remember? Because we watched the musical, and it's called Jersey Boys. Do you remember that? Mom bought you the Jersey Boys soundtrack for Christmas one year.
That was Katie.
And you're like, "The hell is this?"
That was Katie.
What soundtrack did you get that year? Do you remember that year I'm talking about?
No.
When mom gave Katie and you and me each a CD that was some kind of like theatrical soundtrack. Which one did I get? I remember it. I remember that that happened specifically.
I have no clue.
I'm, I'm gonna text Katie. She'll know. Do they multiply, though? Okay, ready? We can, we can squeeze one more in. It's a minute till twelve. We could put a forty-five minutes. Yeah? Do you wanna try for it? Okay.
Um, sorry, just pretty focused.
Go for it. Somebody answered me, thank God. Thank God you're here. She's so focused.
Tomorrow is Thursday.
Yes. Okay, timer's started. You ready? Is that okay? You ready?
Yep, I still have to go pee, but you can start it.
Alright. Hi, Sean. Hi, Jamie.
...
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Um, I don't wear a license number, could be a pass. Do you wanna type right on the sticky note?
Sure.
Thank you. That plus that scared me. Oh my gosh. Whoa, I cannot believe we got two hours already. It's so early.
This is great. I'm having such an allergic something happening with me today.
I like taking an allergy pill also. We need to go.
Are you having an allergic attack today?
I've been sniffling all morning.
I've been sniffing and coughing today. Like, are they doing yard work outside or something?
Must be something.
Actually happened. Like, something is, oh, like, hard. Something's hard. That made me jump too. Scared me, cuz you opened the door right as you learned one off. It's like, uh, uh.
Is it safe to come out? I see books, it's all scary. I love you solitary, you're wonderful. Really focused or half asleep, Penn? Working hard or barely working, eh?
Perhaps studying early is the best. You both seem really focused. Do you hear that? Somebody's not a morning person. One guess who it is.
Hush, Penn. Once she got you on payroll, she could jump on the side. Quick, tell Ken all these things when she's streaming. You did get me up so different last night. I was screwed up on Sea of Thieves with Dre and she pretty much screamed the entire time. She kept getting jumpscared by everything. Like, she'd be fishing on the rail and someone would come up the rail and so they'd be right and she'd, like, she'd lose it, it was great. And then we were trying to get a bunch of, like, gear off of the island into the boat to go sell it. And one of the really, like, cool expensive things you'd get from a stronghold fort is a stronghold gunpowder barrel. It's worth a lot of money, but you have to be careful with it because it's a gunpowder barrel. You blow it up, it blows everything up within, whatever.
And then you don't have it anymore.
Rules, yes, you can't sell it and then also it, it, it blows everything up. And you wanna put it on the ship in a safe spot so you don't explode it and blow up your ship.
Well, what do you need it for then? Just to safekeeping?
To sell, but it's also really powerful. If you took it into an enemy's ship and then blew it up over there, their whole ship would just sink. So if you're looking to, like, wreck somebody's day, you want a stronghold gunpowder, it doesn't matter. Anyways, so we were trying to get onto our ship and A.O. was like, okay, I'm hopping off here with this gunpowder barrel. Andrea had been busy harpooning things into the boat, like other boxes of other stuff. And I think she just, like, I think he hopped in the way or something cuz he was in the air moving. When she got him with the harpoon, harp, like, and blew up the entire ship, imploded and sunk with all of our stuff on it.
Oh, come on!
And then, like...
Come on, Dre!
It was like, that's really good aim. He was, like, flying through the air when you harpooned him, like, Gigi. But she didn't need to, she was aiming for the thing behind him and he, like, jumped and they weren't, like, coordinating. It's fine. So then we blew up the whole ship and then A.O. respawned at the ship. Andrea and I stayed at the fort with all of our loot until he sailed back to the correct island with our boats, with our new boats, our non-imploded boat, so we can fill it back up.
So you could, like, guard all your stuff so no one would steal it or like that?
Yeah, we stayed to guard it cuz anybody could've just come along and we didn't have a boat. Like, if you die, you don't just respawn right there, you respawn back at your boat wherever it is. So if they killed us, we would've been far away with our boat with A.O. and all of our loot would've been left alone.
Oh, so you just stayed?
Yeah, so I was like, I can't die. If I die, then I have to go back to my boat, so I have to stay alive and stay here and guarding the loot.
Got it.
It was a great day.
Alright. You ready, Fred?
Yep, I'm gonna, um, pack this puppy up. I'm gonna pack this puppy up too.
I'm gonna pack this puppy up right here. Into the backpack.
You were out of my league. Do, 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 do.
How am I gonna pack this puppy up? Cuz I have so much paper, it's gonna, like, bend. Hopefully it doesn't bend all my papers. I don't want it to bend all my papers. No, it's not gonna work, okay. Maybe it'll slide in through the top. Alright, that's a full backpack for... Let's see. This. Got that. Garbage, garbage. Okay, I'll be right back. Yeah, see, what's with the coughing? Don't cough like this. My phone. Rest of my sandwich. Cup of A. How are we gonna do this? Well, okay, we're gonna unplug you. Alright, we're on the go. You get a close-up while we're moving through the house. Oh, wow. This is a ni... This is a nice close-up. So close! Do you want eyes or do you want mouth? Not you. It's not, it's not focused on you. Nice wallpaper. I, it's like so close so that I'm not exposing your home.
Just get it under your teeth, that's your best feature.
Do you like these parley whites? Oh, great, let's take lots of screenshots, he says. Okay, let's go outside. You coming? Right behind ya. Oh, you got something here. I've been blinded. Thanks. That's a compliment, right? Okay. Man, I have some bad allergies today. Alright, I'm sorry because we're gonna be popping off wifi. We're still here, we're still here. Just had to, we just left wifi. Oh, I took the mount off the car. Okay. Hang tight. That's not gonna work. The mount's off too. What a hot mess.
Oh my god, hold on.
Hang tight. I'm so hot right now, my gosh.
Yes, that is Tyler, he's picking up Connor to go golfing.
Oh, oh, I didn't even notice him. Alright.
Hey, brother. You wanna, you wanna put, get up? I figured you'd do that since you know how to use it.
It's like, wanna watch Alexa struggle with the mount?
No!
Me too.
It's weird, I feel like Alexa's carrying me. You got, like, a phone call for a second as soon as I looked over.
Of course I did. Okay, we're ready. Yeah, perfect. Perfect, huh? Gotta get the old key, keys? Key keys? Alright, got my book, got my thing. Got the parking pass. Phone plugged in. Okay, crucial, crucial. You were out of my league.
I have the rest of my sandwich right here.
You were more than just a friend. Do, 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 do. I'm gonna pull a chat. You guys wanna see John Wayne calendar?
Oh, yeah, they do.
Sticking to the calendar, pretty
That plus that scared me. Oh my gosh. Oh man. Woo, I cannot believe we got two hours already. It's so early.
This is great. I'm having such an allergic something happening with me today.
I need to take an allergy pill also.
We need to go.
Are you having an allergic attack today?
I've been sniffling all morning.
I've been sniffling and coughing today. Like, are they doing yard work outside or s- like must be something like-
Actually happened.
Like, something is, oh, like, hard. Something's hard. That made me jump too. Scared me, cuz you open the door right as you learn one off. It's like.
Is it safe to come out? I see books. It's all scary. I love you solitary. You're wonderful. Really focused or half asleep, Penn? Working hard or barely working, eh?
Perhaps studying early is the best. You both seem really focused. Do you hear that? Somebody's not a morning person. One guess who it is.
Hush, Penn. Once she got you on payroll, she could jump on the side quick. Tell Ken all these things when she's streaming. You did get me up so dead from last night. I was screwed up on See With These with Dre and she pretty much screamed the entire time. She kept getting jumpscared by everything. Like, she'd be fishing on the rail and someone would come up the rail and so they'd be right and she'd, like, she'd lose it. It was great.
That's cool.
And then we were trying to get a bunch of, like, gear off of the island into the boat to go sell it. And one of the really, like, cool expensive things you'd get from a stronghold fort is a stronghold gunpowder barrel. It's worth a lot of money, but you have to be careful with it because it's a gunpowder barrel. You blow it up, it blows everything up within whatever.
And then you don't have it anymore.
Rules, yes, you can't sell it. And then also, it, it, it blows everything up. And you wanna put it on the ship in a safe spot so you don't explode it and blow up your ship.
Well, what do you need it for then? Just to safekeeping?
To sell, but it's also really powerful. If you took it into an enemy's ship and then blew it up over there, their whole ship would just sink. So if you're looking to, like, wreck somebody's day, you want a stronghold gunpow- it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Anyways, so we were trying to get onto our ship and A.O. was like, okay, I'm hopping off here with this gunpowder barrel. Andrea had been busy harpooning things into the boat, like other boxes of other stuff. And I think she just, like, I think he hopped in the way or something cuz he was in the air moving. When she got him with the harpoon, harp, like, and blew up the entire ship, imploded and sunk with all of our stuff on it.
Oh, come on!
And then, like-
Come on, Dre.
It was like, that's really good aim. He was like flying through the air when you harpooned him, like, Gigi, but she didn't need to. She was aiming for the thing behind him and he, like, jumped and they weren't, like, coordinating. It's fine.
Wow.
So then we blew up the whole ship and then A.O. respawned at the ship and Dre and I stayed at the fort with all of our loot until he sailed back to the correct island with our boat, with our new boat. Our non-imploded boat, so we can fill it back up.
Guard all your stuff so no one would steal it or like that or?
Yeah, we stayed to guard it cuz anybody could've just come along and we didn't have a boat. Like, if you die, you don't just respawn right there. You respawn back at your boat wherever it is. So if they killed us, we would've been far away with our boat with A.O. and all of our loot would've been left alone.
Oh, so you just stayed.
Yeah, so I was like, I can't die. If I die, then I have to go back to my boat, so I have to stay alive and stay here and guarding the loot.
Got it.
It was a great day.
Alright. You ready, Fred?
Yep, I'm gonna, um, pack this puppy up. I'm gonna pack this puppy up too.
Pack this puppy up right here. Into the backpack.
You were out of my league.
How am I gonna pack this puppy up? Cuz I have so much paper, it's gonna, like, bend. Hopefully it doesn't bend all my papers. No, it's not gonna work. Okay, maybe it'll slide in through the top. Alright, that's a full backpack for. Let's see. This. Got that. Garbage, garbage. Okay, I'll be right back. Yeah, see, what's with the coughing? Don't cough like this. My phone. Rest of my sandwich. Cup of A. How are we gonna do this? Well, okay, we're gonna unplug you. Alright, we're on the go. You get a close-up while we're moving through the house. Oh, wow. This is a ni- This is a nice close-up. So close! Do you want eyes or do you want mouth? Not you. It's not, it's not focused on you. Nice wallpaper. I'm, it's like so close so that I'm not exposing your home.
Just get it under your teeth. Your best feature.
Do you like these parley whites? Oh, great. Let's take lots of screenshots, he says. Okay, let's go outside. You coming? Right behind ya. Oh, you got something here. I've been blinded. Thanks. That's a compliment, right? Okay. Man, I have some, I have allergies today. Alright, I'm sorry because we're gonna be popping off wifi. We're still here, we're still here. Just had to, we just left wifi. Oh, I took the mount off the car. Okay. Hang tight. That's not gonna work. The mount's off too. What a hot mess.
Oh my god, hold on.
Hang tight. I'm so hot right now. My gosh.
Yes, that is Tyler. He's picking up Connor to cook coffee.
Oh, oh, I didn't even notice him. Alright.
Hey, brother. You wanna put, get up? Figured you'd do that since you know how to use it. It's like, wanna watch Alexis struggle with the mount?
No!
Me too. It's weird. I feel like Alexis is carrying me. You got like a phone call for a second. As soon as I looked over.
Of course I did. Okay, we're ready. Yeah, perfect.
Perfect, huh?
Gotta get the old key, keys. Key keys? Alright, got my book, got my thing. Got the parking pass. Phone plugged in. Okay, crucial, crucial. You were out of my league.
I have the rest of my sandwich right here.
You were more than just a friend. I'm gonna pull a chat. You guys wanna see John Wayne calendar?
Oh, yeah, they do.
Sticking to the calendar, pretty good. And this is the best part. John Wayne.
John Wayne.
Some people are walking past and watching me oogle my calendar. Alright, let's see. Today. Get the O-CAM binder from Levi and review the O-CAM tests. I am on it. Because I just did, I just reviewed the O-CAM final for the first quarter, but I do have to go get the binder with him later. Is he gonna be on campus today?
Oh, but he probably doesn't have the binder with him, huh?
On Wednesday, so? Oh my god, I'm gonna go give this to Tyler cuz I have to return this to Katie.
Oh, good, he's right there.
Baby, let's get high. John Wayne. I also, my other shock. So good. Why did you turn it back on me fully?
I didn't touch it. Why would I turn that to you? All you talk about is wedgies.
I wanna see my butt!
What film is that pic from?
John Wayne!
Let me take a look-see. What picture was it, this one?
Yes.
Yes. This one is from. Red River, just kidding. This one is El Dorado.
I gotta do something. Don't act like I just-
This one is from El Dorado.
Oh, come on!
It was a pretty harsh stop.
It was nothing of the sort.
Finally, fresh air.
Okay, hold on. I got, sorry for the double chin. I'm sure you're gonna take a screenshot and I love that, but it is what it is. Okay, is that, can we deal with that?
Yeah, what was the problem?
Because it was so high up off of there that, like, the driving jiggles, like, okay, so there. Now that we can, okay.
And I'm sure you're gonna take a screenshot.
Ready, go.
This is El Dorado.
I, I don't have a stop sign.
Yeah, you don't. Just keep going. They do.
I hate when people try to hit me with their cars. They looked up like, oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Then don't go!
You're almost something, just relax, okay. This one is the Cowboys.
It's just him on a- Move those white papers if you don't mind. Just wanted to be slightly more high maintenance.
I have fifty-two screenshots so far, all of Lex.
Oh, bejeebers.
Any, any surprise there, anybody? Ooh, this is a good shot. Look at that grit. Look at him grit in his teeth.
John Wayne!
What's this from? It doesn't seem to say.
Rooster coven.
U.S. Marshal.
Cahill.
Cahill. Start throwing up guesses. Look at that face. Damn. What an American icon.
Okay, but you know who is even hotter than him? His son, Patrick Wayne.
He was pretty cute in The Clint Hock.
Oh, he's so cute!
Uh, he's not John Wayne though, sorry. I gotta thank Broad Shoulders and Slim Hips. And a bad attitude.
Okay. There it is.
Here's your rooster.
There's my, my rooster.
Rooster cock? I don't know if you'd like cockadoodle, I don't know.
Cockadoodle.
I'm gonna print them all off and just put them on my bedroom wall, one for every week of the year.
Oh my gosh!
Actually, pretty flattering, to be honest.
Thank you, yeah. It's sort of like a shrine.
Nineteen forty-eight Red River John Wayne. Hello Sexy Town.
Hello Sexy Town! Oh, he's young there.
He's not even young. He's like, definitely still at least thirty.
Yeah, you know, he started his career in his mid-thirties, I think.
There's a couple of black and whites where he's like, gotta be twenty, like.
Twenty?
Yeah, like, he's so freaking young. Look at this right here. How old is he right here?
Twenty, Kenzie? He's like a child, twenty?
Twenty?
No, he's like, at least, like, close to thirty.
He's so young in some of those early black and whites.
I don't know about that.
They barely have any audio either, so it tells me that it's like the thirties, which is ten years prior to this.
I thought he was the kinda guy that, like, he didn't break out until later, like, a little bit later.
He listens to so many westerns at such a young age.
Why does this, it seems like it keeps moving back towards you.
All of these pictures, though, definitely feature, seem to be him much older. Well, not much older, but look at this. Look, fucking, nineteen thirty. Look at him.
Wow, look at his face.
Nineteen thirty, zero lines. He hasn't even been to the west.
They just airbrushed it.
Nineteen thirty. See, I called it and here, there's proof one page later.
Oh, you're gonna love this. Uh, there's a sheriff behind us and my tags are expired.
Oh, I'm gonna love this.
You're gonna, you're gonna love this. I think we're gonna get pulled over. I feel like we are. Yeah, maybe.
Your tags are expired?
They are.
Why are you driving around expect- stop freaking out, relax, he's not gonna tell you what we're doing already.
I'm not freaking out.
Why are your tags expired?
Well-
See what had happened to us.
The car isn't registered in my name.
Oh, okay.
So I don't have, I, I mean, I have control, I guess.
It's your husband's car. And he has to get the tags fixed.
I guess, I guess that's the correct answer. Either I do it or I don't, I guess.
So today's lab, it's week ten, and we're gonna do climate change and migration. So we're gonna be talking about predicting amphibian migration events using climate data and knowledge of amphibian behavior. So part one is amphibians on the move predicting why and when. Um, so it's like, we're gonna talk about frogs, like, a lot of frogs. Yeah, amphibians. So, we're tracking amphibian movement using some kind of, some kind of website, it looks like. Looks like there's some kind of-
Yamaha?
Climate tracker map. I don't understand that. There's so much, like, calculation stuff that we're gonna have to do. I'm really not, oh, use GIS to model species habitat under different climate scenarios.
That's my favorite quarter of bio, honestly. It's like so interesting. I but I don't, I'm not, like, so interested in animals that I, I think I'd wanna be a vet, like, you know what I mean?
Right.
Wherehow some people are like, oh my god, the animals are my favorite part.
Sorry, when the phone rang, I was like, well!
Did it, just, like, grab you at a weird stopper?
Um, it's like being into, like, cell, like, animal life and, like, amphibians and climate change and something like that, just meaning you wanna be a, like, 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 you're not gonna run it, like, you're not gonna take care of a pet gecko and you're a veterinarian.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't really relate that.
You just, if you're a vet, you just deal with lots of cats and dogs or you deal with, like, big animals.
I think vets are kinda like-
Put my arm in anybody.
People who wanna help, like, and be a doctor, medical, that type of surgery style, like, scenario, but, like, don't wanna operate on humans. That's how I feel, like, vets kinda end up being like, like, it's just like-
Maybe you, like, grew up on a ranch or a farm or something too.
Oh, that's a good point.
Used to it, or you-
Oh, that reminds me of that, like, book series, um-
Quilleran.
Yeah, no.
Halloran, Hallorak.
No.
Hallaback?
Hollaback?
Holiday?
James-
James Quilleran.
Jeffrey Harriet.
That's so wrong!
It's not Quilleran, that's the Cat Who murder series.
I know, I know. I know immediately that James Quilleran was-
Okay.
Was Cat Who, man.
It's like James Harriet.
That's it.
Is that it?
James Harriet Tubman.
No. John Henry. What's the first name of the guy who signed the Declaration of Independence?
John Hancock.
John Hancock. Okay, never mind, not him.
I'm just looking for excuses to say the word cock this morning, aren't you?
Start with a J and end with an H, you know? No, it's like John Harriet.
John, it's James Harriet.
Ain't no Hallaback, girl.
It's James Harriet.
Geez, okay. Anyways, it was a veterinarian, uh, like, series.
Audiobooks.
Audiobooks, yeah, and it was about this veterinarian that would go out on these calls. That's the most boring premise I've ever heard in my life.
Good.
I mean, when I was a kid, it was kind of interesting, I guess. Because my only other option was, like, the Gaither band, so I didn't have a whole lot here.
Sheriff just got on the freeway going the opposite way. I think we're in the clear!
Think he's gonna, like, pull you, hop on the other freeway side.
Okay, I'm gonna have to deal with that. I'm gonna, I'll deal with it today.
Yeah, you're clearly left a little bit. Ginkgo's like, I'm not freaking out, you're freaking out!
I am freaking out, though. I don't wanna get pulled over, man.
James Harriet.
I was talking to mom and she was like-
Penn confirmed it's James Harriet.
Oh, nice, 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 nice. I hate it when you can't think of it and then, so satisfying when you do.
That's why I always just text Katie cuz she always knows, I never know.
Mom was like, you need to just deal with that because it's gonna be so much worse if you actually get a ticket. And I'm like, ah, I know. Then I was gonna do it cuz I told her I was gonna do it two days ago, but I didn't do it.
Is it? It's a registration. It's like eighty-six bucks. How much is a ticket? I think it's more than a hundred bucks, is it? Just saying.
I guess, I don't know. I think it's a lot. I think if you don't have your car registered, it's like a lot more, like, maybe closer to three hundred.
It's not that you don't have it registered, it's just-
It is though. The tags are expired.
Right, but it's not like you're not in the system. You're just like a couple months late paying for a new one.
So it's not my car, I'm the one that's late.
Alexis is such a rebel. Yeah, she is. What a badass. In those braids.
We've got a real badass over here.
Driving around with expired tags.
That's, I don't like that.
I don't either. I hate it.
I've got insurance. I've got, I guess that's all that you have.
A valid driver's license is probably the next one.
Oh, it's an ODL.
I do have-
Do other people refer to it? Well, I'm sure. If you live, oh, but what about this? If you live in California, do you call your driver's license a CDL? Cuz a CDL is like a commercial driver's license.
No one calls it.
I have a CDL and a CDL.
I don't think anyone abbreviates it like we do. It's usually driver's license.
Plus, like, if you live in Arizona, you call it an ADL, an activity of daily living. We call it ODL, though. Or it's like referred to that. Or a driver's license.
It's like Dolph Lundgren, oh. Can I be the, who does that make me? Am I Phil or am I Louise?
Am I the one that gets to be with Brad Pitt? I hope so.
I guess I'll be the other one then.
We both die, it doesn't matter. One of us gets raped in a parking lot, though.
Yeah, cuz I guess I'll take that bullet. I guess I'll take that bullet.
Well, one of us is Saruzen Sarandon, Susan Sarandon. That's probably me. Just cuz she has red hair, I guess.
I love Sarandon, though.
Which means you're the one that gets raped, but then you also get raped. But he's kind of a dick, so it's not good. It's fine, it's whatever. Pros and cons.
I love that you're only related to get to one specific movie instead of, like, the actual, like, history.
What do you mean? It's not history. Is it, is it a stor- a real story?
Oh, I thought it was.
I thought it was just a movie. Oh my gosh!
I thought it was based off of, like-
Boy, will I be embarrassed if I find out that it's a real history.
One reference is like, oh, you got sex with Brad Pitt. I'm like, well, is it worth it? I don't know. Actually, I thought it was based off of a true story. I think it was all true, but I thought it was based off of a true story. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I really don't, I, I really don't know.
Can we just escalate it quickly?
You were more than just a dream. Alright, I need to register the car. Isn't really eighty-six, that's a lot of money. I don't wanna.
Can we not dwell?
Snorlax, what, your Snorlax?
Ranger chewed up his toy instantly, so I gave him that Snorlax. It was a backup toy.
What?
He didn't, he didn't do it, he licked it twice and then he left it. Maybe he knew emotionally, I didn't really wanna give it, give it up.
He could sense, you know, that you were torn.
Licked it all over.
Ew, I touched it and put it on my face this morning.
You're welcome. Dog slopper. Alexa, got me a turkey bacon egg white sandwich.
Can you put that in the garbage can in the back? Thank you.
Turkey bacon. I'd rather eat a dog slopper Snorlax. Why would you eat a blushy? It's not appetizing at all. Did you bring your flashcards?
I did.
I'm gonna quiz you?
No.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. I'm about to do, like, another two hours and then I'm about to come back and do another three hours with you. So I think I just need a little break, don't you think?
Yeah, good point.
There are some people, though, that will study for twelve hours straight.
If you don't take slight breaks, it's literally statistically proven that your, like, intake percentage goes down.
Yeah, I guess people would argue, though, like, is, is five percent better than zero percent? That could be like dumb.
What about, like, eighty percent and then a ten-minute break and then another eighty percent, you know? As opposed to, like, you just keep going down. You go down, you know, five percent, five percent, five. It's like, you have to take a break at some point or you're never gonna, like, refresh to get back up to a hundred. It's like, you have to recharge your phone or the phone dies.
You know?
I guess having a phone on one percent is better than having no phone for one minute.
It seems, it seems dramatic.
Break it down? You wanna break it down with me? Wow, so five days ago, I uploaded this Cooking Every Plate Spicy Honey Butter Chicken video. And, um, after that, it's been Study Session, Study With Me, Three Hours, number seven. Study Session, Study With Me, Two Hours, number eight. Study Session, Study With Me, Two Hours, number nine. Study Session, Study With Me, Three Hours, number ten. It's just been, like, eight study videos in a row.
That's all you're doing cuz it's a week.
That was a four-hour. I said three hours, but it took four hours with Ranger.
To do the, the four sessions or to do three sessions?
It must've been three sessions. I've been calling it three hour, I've been calling it the hours based on the session, so like-
Yeah, yeah.
So like yesterday, I did, I streamed for an hour and forty-two minutes. And I think I did two short sessions.
What's a short session?
Thirty minutes. I just looked at the time and I was like, well shit, I have to do, like, this, this. So I was like, well, okay, and then I'm gonna do, so I titled it one and a half hours.
Oh, okay.
That's what I titled it.
Yeah.
I think I did thirty-five minute timers.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what I did. Yeah, but mixing up the, uh, emojis, you like that? Jerk DNA, jerk Petri dish, Petri dish. Do you like them all just having the DNA molecule? I have to kinda mix it up. I think it's cute.
I think I'm just like an organized brain in the, in the sense of, like, the first five, be, like, one week is all one thing. Week two or like, you know, or like, all the same for a certain chunk or, I don't know, it's just the way my brain organizes things. But I don't, I don't care. And my, the DNA molecule is my favorite, and so I, I always pick that one. I just think it's so cute.
The Petri dish is kind of my favorite.
Which one is that? Oh. That is cool. Would you really like my girl? Is that why? Or just like the aesthetic of it is just cute? I liked my girl, I guess. I think my favorite so far is, is O-CAM.
Class?
Yeah. And it, it's like pretty hard and I wonder if my reasons for it are like, that's you.
I did well in it. I think that specifically is it, it's a pride factor for you, as in the, the class itself, you just, like, really succeeded at it, so you, like, really enjoyed it cuz you felt like you didn't really go at it, which you did, so. I think if I had asked you a year ago this time, he's, O-CAM, your favorite subject, I would've said fuck no.
What do you think I would've said?
No, that class is hard, it's terrible.
What, what one would you have said, thought I would've said?
I have no clue. You would just take a gym camp, like, one term of it, maybe.
Oh, like, of the retakes, you mean? Cuz I've taken every single class. I mean, I've taken a pile of it.
Remember you talking about is that bird class you took.
Oh, I did really like that class. That was, like, so fun.
I took screenshots of you eating, Ken. Thank you, Ginkgo. Hi, Talon. Been here for every study session the whole time you were live during.
Oh!
It's MRG.
That's commitment.
He's gonna be smarter than us. Yesterday on Twitter, when I was like, I'm not sure about my study session, Ginkgo was like, oh no, my favorite time of the day. I was like, don't worry, I'm gonna squeeze one in, and then I did.
Squeeze in what? A twitch thing or squeeze in a study? You did, you did a study last night.
I was impressed.
Did you get stuff done? Did you feel like, or what?
I did, I got through a bio lecture.
That's good. How were your chem tests?
I, I mostly, my chem tests, they're fine, they're fine. It's just, oh, on the schedule, I switched over to bio, like, yesterday, so yesterday and today. But, um, ye- so yesterday I listened to, like, a lecture, but granted, like, half of it was like an in-class workshop, so there wasn't a whole lot of lecture. But I spent the rest of the time, that was all those papers on the table today. I printed out my practice exams, I printed out my weekly vocab words, and then I was putting together the, uh, lecture slides with the vocab words and then getting my exams ready, so. I was just kind of, I spent like a good, probably twenty-five minutes just organizing papers and like preparing.
That's part of it, though, cuz in your head, you have to feel that calm, you have to feel that, like, sense of-
It's like, I have to have that, what am I gonna do that, you know, so I don't know.
Are you feeling like you're staying on your schedule, like, you are gonna have enough time to get it all done?
I mean, yes and no, cuz I've gotten a little behind on probably both topics. Not super far behind, but it's like because I'll come across a subject that I'm like, I don't feel good about this, so I will, like, take an extra amount of time and look in on it. in on it and try to like get it, so I know it really well.
Yeah, totally.
So that's why, it's cause it's like, I, also, I, you know, I have shortened the stream, like two now, I think I was supposed to do longer ones and I shortened them. So I definitely, the thing is though, I was looking at my schedule for this week and I.
You do have some extra open time slots that aren't allocated towards a certain material though too, right?
Yeah, so Monday the tenth, um, I put down study session three to eight, but I could easily start much sooner. It's, it's the finals week, I don't have any lab or anything that day, obviously. So I could probably get started by eleven or twelve. I know you can't join that soon, but I could definitely start much sooner and make like a big, long day that day. And then same with Sunday the ninth, you know, we only put the ten to free Proctor D A T exam. I mean, yes, there's the Yanks rated four three, but last time we did, we did a study and then we did, I don't know, I don't know, how are you feeling or whatever?
I just mean like, the day of the test, you just say like cram. And other day you say, oh, but you know, like that, where you could do, you could fit material in that you hadn't had time to finish.
Oh duh, no, that's what I, definitely, definitely. On my, the di- the calendar at home, I wrote down on my whiteboard, uh, what I wanted to study each day. Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday all don't have like anything written on them.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Cause I started last Saturday with my like covering all the topics review. So yeah, behind, but I saved myself. My car's going fast. But I saved myself like three or four days to like do that catch up. So I think, I feel fine, I feel fine, I'm plugging through it, it's good. Today's Wednesday.
What class is more important for you to just totally ace on the final? You just wanna do both?
Right now, I feel. I don't know, I really wanna ace bio.
Okay. Yeah. We'll just stick to the plan of acing both.
Okay.
Do you feel more comfortable with the chem stuff? Is that why you say that?
Yes and no, but the, the reason, the reason I say that is because bio is mostly memorization, right? So it's like, I have to go over all the topics, all of it. Chem, while I feel like I'm not as strong right now in chem as I am in bio, chem is cumulative, so like I, I will know already most of it. And then also, like what we've been doing the last couple of days is going over the calculations that I feel like I was rusty on or that I wasn't sure about. And you know, once I know how to work those, then I can put a lot more of it together then.
Yeah, yeah, whereas like you have.
Whereas bio, I actually just have to know everything. So I guess that's why, that's my answer, maybe.
Feel like you could work yourself at least into like partial credit on stuff?
Right, and I don't wanna, I don't want that to be my failsafe, but as far as today is concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
If I had to take it right now, that's where I would be. But luckily I have another full week to study. Um, so tomorrow, I'm doing, I'm working from nine to noon, and then I made plans with Mia to stream Sea of Thieves. She's on an eastern time zone, so it has to be like earlier in the day. So I was, we were scheduled for a study session three to eight, but I'm hoping to do it four to nine, cause I could stream with her noon to four. And then do studying four to nine.
Let's do four to eight.
Okay.
Like you're, well, okay, here's the thing. I guess yes, go until nine, cause here's the thing, you're like, I'm gonna stream with her from four to, or noon to four. But you're not gonna like close off at three fifty-nine and, and start studying at four oh oh, you know?
It's true, and it's Sea of Thieves, so it's like shit, I'm gonna, in my head, I was like, darn, I don't even know if I'm gonna like, should I, should we cancel study session tomorrow? I don't wanna do that.
No, because finals are next week. Like, you, you shouldn't cancel anything studying. Why don't we do four thirty to eight thirty? And then just, you still stream from, from like noon to four, do your noon to four thing. But then that'll give you like, if it goes over to like four ten, four fifteen or whatever, then like, I'll just be there and be ready to.
Okay, let's plan on that, let's plan on that.
Just know like in your head that at four three zero, you're gonna sit down and be like looking at your shit.
Yeah, I hate, I hate to break it up like that, but like, our normal study sessions can't start until after like what, three, cause you know, work, so three to eight, three to nine, whatever. But she's on eastern time, so she's three hours ahead. So like, if we were done at nine and I was like, let's group at nine, like that's too late for her, it's eleven to talk, like she's too early for her, so. I would have to do it earlier than, I've been trying to group with her for like a literal year, so.
Okay, that's definitely, that works for me.
Anyway, so I'm gonna do a noon to four with her and then study session in the middle and then.
Four thirty to eight thirty.
Write that down.
And that's, that seems fine, that seems appropriate. Definitely cannot be cancelling study sessions, so I mean.
What's, um, Friday is.
Writing on next Tuesday, so it's like.
What did we put for Friday? We put.
It's next Tuesday?
We put three to eight. Well, Friday I can start sooner too. That's, like what am I gonna be doing Friday until three? Literally, I have no plans. I'll just start early.
You should be like cramming for the final. And then some of that stuff will go in your long-term memory, so that Monday, when you're cramming again, that stuff will be in your short-term memory. I think our stuff will move into the long-term. That's how that works, right?
Working me hard over here. Four thirty P M. Here we go. Yeah, when you finish this score with a full title, that's gonna be good.
We're studying later too?
We are studying after this.
We're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I have a lot of practice tests to get through. I just started the chem stuff today, so I wanted to get through all that, grabbed the book from Libby. And that's like today, tomorrow and Friday is chem stuff. Then Saturday I wanna do some Q R and reading, then my practice test is Sunday, so then I'll have like review, at least done a, a basic review joint for everything. Q R, I don't need to review quite as much. And I think like, cause taking chemistry is a lot of calculations and things like that. I think some of that's already just in there naturally, which is. And I'm anxious to see how the practice test goes, that'll be like such a good indication of where I'm at.
Dre always texts me a bunch, like whenever she's trying to get my attention, she's texting me, I don't respond right away. She'll be like, Kanzo, Kanzilla, Kanzanider, Kanz- whatever. So I messaged her on Discord about this, about our podcast schedule, and I was like, Dura, Drzilla, Dre yay yay, Drizzle, Daniel. Ended with a full dude's name, Daniel. Like what?
I went and had dinner with Diane and Andrew last night.
Nice, how'd that go?
At La Margarita. It was really fun. I took a Lyft downtown. And she was like, cause I shared my ride with her, you know, and she was like, why are you lifting downtown? Cause it's like two miles, you know? I was like, well, because there was a car accident, you know, that big wreck the other day. I was like, it's just not worth it. Like that guy's gonna go to jail for thirty years. Like, it's just not worth it to drive.
Ever, no.
If you're gonna have a drink, even at all. It's just like, it's so easy to get a ride.
No, it's so, it's so easy nowadays.
Like five dollars to get home in someone's car to drive me door to door. Like it's not that big of a deal, I'd much rather do that. I'd much rather do that.
No, it's, it, yeah.
And then shit that have dragged me home and was like, yeah, free ride home.
I see how it is.
No, I, it wasn't like that.
No, I know, I was kidding.
I was telling her about the other, the other day, how it kinda went off my rocker, and she was like, you've been getting crazier and crazier lately.
Who?
Diane said, oh my god. About how I was like mad about my headphones, you know?
Yeah.
And she was just like. Anyways, I was like, when's the last time that you overreacted? Like, you're not perfect, I know you aren't. Like tell me when you lost your temper. And she, I was like, oh, like I remember when it was about the tattoo, remember?
Oh damn, yeah. How'd that resolve, by the way?
She was like, cause I, I had said like, when I found out, I, it's like, I just, it's like when your anger snaps and you just are, it could be something stupid, but you just, I'm so livid, I haven't been this mad in a, a year at least or longer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, she's like, well, I wanted to um, stomp on his phone. It's like, but I didn't. Okay, that's the thing.
Important part.
Yeah, cause she was saying, as opposed to me, I was like, I just wanted to like cuss him out in a text, but I actually did it. She was like, you're getting crazier and crazier. Like you, you shouldn't do that.
How'd that resolve with the tattoo with her? She's got over it?
I don't think she would be happy with that flippant of an answer.
Okay.
You know? I'm not, I'm not sure where they're at on that. I haven't heard any updates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious. I hadn't heard, I haven't heard about it at all.
Yeah, I haven't heard much about it either. I only chug up because it's like, we all got our own stuff to deal with, you know, and it's like, some stuff is so like upsetting to someone else that I would not be bothered by. But then something is so upsetting to me that like someone else would like wouldn't be bothered by it all. You wouldn't be mad if some, if someone took your headphones?
You know.
You might, you might be. She wouldn't. I don't, I don't know if she would. She might not, that might not have affected her.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it just depends on the scenario.
Super like gobby.
I'm always pretty generous with my shit.
Do not touch my things without asking.
You do have a little bit of a complex about that, but that's probably like our fault. You're like the older sister who always had like her younger siblings jacking all her shit all the time.
Thank you for saying that.
It's an honest truth statement.
I was talking to Katie and she was like, I, I don't know quite what that feels like to have somebody like just flounce into my space, into my private personal space and take something. Thief, thief me, steal something from me, and then like flauntingly wear it in front of you. Where you like, are pretty sure that I'm not willing to make a scene, cause I'm like careful of like, you know? Like you know I'm not gonna blow up in front of somebody, embarrass you, you're just gonna get away with it, cause you're a shitty younger sister.
Okay, so you're not over it then?
I'm not over, I clearly not. Like it makes me lose my temper. Like a, I don't know, like what? Like somebody who can't control their temper. I lost it, I wanted to like bite something. No, that's not true. I wanted, I don't know what I wanted to do, cause like, whatever I break, I have to replace, pay for, so it's like, I don't wanna like break anything, just, I was so mad. Like bite my tooth off.
Twenty minutes, that's not true, M R G, at all.
What twenty minutes?
Did I speak, Marshall?
What twenty minutes?
We're from Oregon. M R G said, he hasn't acknowledged, I haven't acknowledged for twenty minutes, I think they forgot we're here. Next, this time next week, you'd have already taken your bio final.
Yeah, this'll all be over until the next quarter.
Don't touch my shit. Yeah, she's a bit of a complex about that, in case you didn't tell, but it's, it's our fault, so you know. Yeah, no, for sure. I don't really care, but just like tell me about it is my only thing.
It would have been totally fine if he had just been like, hey, I'm gonna grab those headphones for my trip, do you mind? I'd be like, no, take whatever you need.
Yeah, so I feel that.
All good, like not a, I, I wouldn't even have noticed if he hadn't left his crappy headphones in their place, in the wrong spot.
See, that's like the shitty part about, I'd be like, so you took my shit and then you replaced it with your busted shit, and then like, what, I'm supposed to just not react about this? Like that's just shifty. Why don't you just ask to borrow my nice headphones and then we'll move on?
Granted though, I mean, his flight left at seven A M, so he left the house at four A M. So it's like, do I wake her up and piss her off?
Yeah, yeah.
Or do I?
Did he shoot you a text for when you woke up?
No.
Or leave you a note?
No.
That's what I would have done.
Yeah, me too.
But I understand that if you're like, trying to get ready for your flight, trying to hop on your plane, she's like.
If you feel like you have to walk on angels. Like, do I say something? Or do I wake her up and she'll yell at me? Do I not say something and then she'll yell at me?
That's pretty stressful when you're trying to like get ready for a flight, he's just trying to get the fuck out of town, you know?
Yeah, he's like, I'll just deal with her later, she'll get over it, which is true. Just sucks for me in the moment. Go ahead.
They're not gonna go there idiots.
Oh, wait until the last minute until this guy has to slam on the brakes. Cool. What a dick.
Oh, what in the heck? Wow, this Prius driver can eat ten dicks. The fuck was that?
Just living their life, you know, not affecting, not aware of anyone else.
So am I beating up Lex, every Prius driver.
Prius drivers.
How are you guys doing today? What are you doing? We're headed down to school. It's a chill day, it's a chill Prius day. I really didn't want my scarf, but it's.
Well, here, let's turn off the A C.
Being used to prop the phone right now, so.
Right.
Try and not have it.
Jiggly. Jiggly puff.
So Audrey said, cause your smile is so cute and sweet, lights the room, just like Jiggly Puff, and now he's called me Jiggly Puff for three days straight.
Aww.
Doesn't when Jiggly Puff sings, everyone falls asleep? It's kinda cute. It's kinda cute, yeah. You guys ready for some of the Sea of Thieves tomorrow at noon o'clock my time?
Noon o'clock?
I wanna crew up, be crewing up with Mia for some pirates. She does not mess around, dude, I was watching her the other day.
Really?
She pulled up this map and there's like a bunch of X's on it where the treasure, she's like, okay, got it. And then she's like runs it over there and sticks her shovel in the dirt and finds a fucking chest. And I have to like look at it, dig, wrong spot. Look at it, dig, wrong, like there's a bush there, across the bush, dig. She's just, she's been playing it for years straight. She puts a shit ton of time to this game. She knows where stuff is on the map, like she knows the islands.
Cool, oh wow.
So stoked, so stuck to crew.
Alright, cool.
I went, I asked Dre if she'd join too, and Dre's like, fine. Like great, so we got Dre who blows up charcoal gunpowder, so explodes the whole ship, and then we got Mia who's like serious savage.
Epic gamer.
So anyways, well, it was a really fun day, I'm sure. Penny, I think she's played it a few times, just like a couple times.
Just a few here and there, no big.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm excited. They have a new boat called Arena Boat, so you get um, a time limit and a team. And um, there's a certain number of uh, maps to certain islands, and I think everyone has the same maps. And there's X's on the maps, and it's just whichever team digs up and turns in to a specific guy in the middle of the map on a boat, the most number of chests. So you have to just like find the chest, dig him up, don't let anyone kill you, take it to your boat, get your boat to the dude and turn it in. So she was on a team of like three or four people, and she was just on the island digging up chests and like putting them in a pile, digging in a pile and digging in a pile. And then some guy came onto her island, dug up a chest, so she killed him, stole his chest, put it in her pile, and then told her team, and then they like mopped up, and they all just harped them all into the boat and left. And she just once again got new maps and then just kept digging up, she was just like.
She was just digging, 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 digging.
And her, and her team was like in charge of like delivering them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool, that's sick.
It was super cool. That's like, girl, you're slaying right now.
So that's what, what's Dre gonna do? Just like fish around and you're gonna deliver and she's gonna dig?
No, we're not gonna play Arena, we're gonna do adventure mode. No more Sea of Thieves, please, it's killing me. Sorry, Ginkgo. Okay, I promise that. I'm having a really good time right now.
I wanna go back to Red Dead.
I got Corey hooked in, do it again.
Yeah, you gotta go back to Red Dead though.
I don't know, Craft keeps trying to get me to go back to Red Dead, there's like poker and something else, you know?
Well, I'm gonna wait for the next, whatever update there is or whatever mission.
As long as a game has fishing, I guess you'll play it. Pretty much accurate, yeah.
For whatever reason, cause you've like never fished in Red.
I hate I R L fishing.
Never fished in real life.
I've done it one time and it was really boring as hell, but in game, it's just so satisfying. I got many chores to get done in the house today.
Yeah, Ginkgo, get your chores done. I'm complaining about my game choices.
I gotta play what I want now. I bet it's like putting it out the same one device.
Wish my hair was dry already, it's getting there, but.
I know how I can do that.
No, please.
Oh, yes. Straight into the face.
No, I don't want that.
Eighty degree temperatures, straight into your eyes. I can't get it to work, so nevermind.
Good.
I've been updating the schedule as it's happening and adjusting timeframes and adding checkmarks to the days that are completed and the streams that are done.
Good, good.
Apparently I already added this checkmark to the um, six P M to eight P M tonight, so we have to do that for sure. There's already a check on it, so I can't, can't go back now.
I think all I have to do is, well, how long, you just have lap? Okay, but then, like six to nine, I, oh, and then you're streaming afterwards.
See, I just, no, it just has six to eight on the calendar for tonight.
We're gonna get back at like four.
Technically the lap goes from two to, if I stay for the, some days it's shorter, some days it's longer. Last week it was like a. Technically, the lab goes from two to, if I stay for the, some days it's shorter, some days it's longer, last week, it was like a full, not last week? Was that the week you didn't come with me last week? Yeah, it was a full day. This is the last week, but the time before that, we did come with me, was it an hour and a half, maybe? Yeah, it was short as hell.
I can't imagine that we, a full three hours during Dead Week, usually there's not even, it's like turning your lab reports. Or like, do the final presentations or something like, what's, is there an actual lab?
Yeah, yeah, week ten, that's what I was reading earlier, it's the amphibian movement of climate change measurements, uh.
We did talk about how you had missed a week due to like Memorial Day and something else. So they probably had to like, move it, move the labs around.
Um, no, no, because Memorial Day week, there was still a bio lab, the only week, the only, the only lab I missed that week was chem. In fact, chem, like, week, um, it's just usually not ten labs, there's usually like, six or seven labs. Well, one of the weeks, we walked out into the woods, so we didn't have a lab, we had like a, a research day.
I wouldn't consider that on lab.
Oh, I would too, yeah, then there's been ten, I mean, that's a lot. Keeping you guys deep. Crazy day, city lights. Joshua, I'm housing in Arizona the other day.
Were you really? Did you find anything?
Oh wow, clearing out my internet search history, and it includes, is Patrick Wayne John Wayne's son, and how many seasons are there in Murder She Wrote? I was just Googling Patrick Wayne, cause I saw him in a diff, dude, he was in an episode of Murder She Wrote. He was in an episode of Murder She Wrote, and I was like, wait a second, that's from McLean talking, I was like, I know who that guy is. Connor was like, oh, there's so many cameos in Murder She Wrote.
Do you know what John Wayne's real name is?
Yeah, Marion Michael Morrison.
Nope. Marion Mitchell Morrison.
Definitely Marion Michael Morrison.
No, I just looked it up yesterday.
I just looked it up like, two months ago.
Look it up right now. Marion Mitchell Morrison.
They change it every three months just to mess with me?
Hundo percent.
This says Marion Robert Morrison.
Uh-oh, both wrong.
No.
I looked on, I think it might've been just Wikipedia.
Wikipedia says Marion Mitchell.
That's what I saw yesterday. Well, maybe, he has a son named Michael, Michael, Michael Morrison. Or Michael Wayne, I guess is his name, actually.
And, um, this is Marion Robert Morrison, what the hell?
Look up Marion Michael Morrison and see if that shows up anywhere.
Oh, I guess it's Marion Mitchell Morrison, born Marion Robert Morrison.
Look, when you look at your phone, when, it's like this.
Well, um, what's this song where he sings about it? Maybe it is Mitchell. But then what's with the Robert? Marion Robert Morrison, as per his birth certificate, but his parents changed it to Marion Michael Morrison after the birth of his brother in nineteen eleven. Another story says that Duke was the name he went by as a young man, okay. IMDb, here we go. Marion Robert Morrison. He's a football scholarship, he became close friends with director John Ford. Which he began doing some bit parts billed as John Wayne, his first featured film was Men Without Women nineteen thirty. After more than seventy low-budget westerns and adventures. Ford cast him in Stagecoach nineteen thirty-nine, made him a star. He then appeared in nearly two hundred and fifty movies from nineteen forty-two, oh, until whenever. He had a cancerous left lung removed in sixty-four, and in seventy-eight, he had a heart valve replacement, and in seventy-nine, his stomach was removed, my god.
How do you get your stomach removed?
I wonder, how do you?
Part of his stomach, maybe?
Uh, it says his stomach. He got an Oscar for his role as a one-eyed rooster cock running True Grit.
Yeah, he did like, his big stuff later on.
That's what I was thinking. So apparently, the movies I'm familiar with are his seventy low-budget westerns in nineteen thirty and nineteen thirty-nine, love that.
What year was he born?
He was born, I don't know. Have to get there, apparently. Oh, nineteen oh seven. I think it was Marion Robert, and his parents changed it to Marion Michael, Mitchell, and I think Marion Michael is just somebody typing the wrong thing thirty, it's, it, every fourth one is Marion, something different. It's like, I don't understand, I think Marion Robert is the correct one. He was born in nineteen oh seven and he died in nineteen seventy-nine, seventy-two years old. Duke. Seven kids, three wives. Born in Iowa, president of the Glendale High School class of nineteen twenty-five. He lost his football scholarship due to a body surfing accident. Ah, Chisholm Trail, Red River, a good one. The Man who Shot Liberty Valance, True Grit, oh, The Quiet Man, real Bravo.
I knew Quiet Man was one of the earlier ones, is that one of the seventy low budgets?
He starred as an aging gunfighter battling cancer in The Shootist in nineteen seventy-six.
Is The Quiet Man one of his seventy low budgets?
Nah. That was before the nineteen forties, where his seventy low budgets, he was just like, little western parts here and there.
There was one movie, I think one of the bigger ones, where like, the director overlapped his work with shooting another movie. And so the last minute, he had his friend, John Ford, come in to finish directing, it's like, he gave him, he like, paid him back, sort of.
So.
Just reading that the other day.
So if his first cast was in nineteen thirty, and he was born in nineteen oh seven, I'd like to, bruh, 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 announce that I was right, and that his first film was when he was twenty-seven, thank you, very much, and good day, sir, I said good day. Take your left at the light up here, to get to my parking spot. Dang you hotspot, car stick, pull over, I'm getting dizzy, high solitary, we're almost there. Smooth over here, Ginkgo, good, good, Ken, he was a boy named Sue, John Wayne is a manly name.
Marion is not.
Y'all better watch The Shootist, apparently we need to watch The Shootist.
I'll watch it.
Let's have a Shootist movie day, I guess.
Alright, left here, you say?
Wow, yes, please, Emmergy just said, I've never seen a John Wayne movie without falling asleep, that's fucking sad. Ginkgo said, you go to hell.
You go to hell.
Go to hell, Emmergy, oh my god, he can control a room with the sound of his voice, he was still pretty in The Quiet Man, yeah, he was young at the second age, so. Arby, what's up? Avery, hey, how's it going? How's it going, you guys? Um. So to recap, today, we've been discussing John Wayne. Can we turn right here? Yes, please, no, yes. Sorry, there was a one way that you pass, now this is the one you turn right on. Red River. He's so young in The Big Trail, it's nuts. Mightest.
Wrong movie.
Yeah, I know. So, um, you think he got to keep any of the outfits he wore in any of his shows, or?
So he has like, four hundred cowboy suits?
They're all like, gonna be leather vests, like, all of his outfits are leather vests.
Go ahead, I guess.
And belts? You think they like, made sure that his outfit didn't look exactly the same? I mean, there's only so many ways you can mix match, like, a gun belt.
Shirt, tan pants.
Chaps, and a leather belt, and a kerchief, you know, and a kerya, like, how many, how many?
Leather gun belts.
It's like, how many?
Tied down on the hip with a pig string.
And I'm sure they saved on a lot of set materials.
They just said, bring your old gun belt from McLean, would ya? And bring the pig strings too.
Please let me bring my man, where are you going, piece of shit car?
This guy, go, go, go! What the hell is, oh, it's some stupid, stupid little hoe.
Take a left here.
I know. Literally like, the dumbest, young, stupid girl, like, on her phone, huh, what, where do I go? Go, I don't care where you go, just go.
God, what an idiot.
It's like, right when you get to campus.
Anywhere, anywhere, yeah, we're here.
Okay. Like, do I go yet? Yes!
Stupid.
Alright, well, gotta go.
Likes just turning to the dark side.
I'm not, I'm not gonna stay alive, like, walking in to find a spot.
Yeah, no, what closes it down?
I have to go pee, it's like, you're gonna leave me to go to lab, I'm gonna take you to the toilet with me?
I don't know, we're just gonna close it down, we're just gonna close it down. We're gonna close down, we'll be back later tonight for some more studies, I gotta get my lab, I gotta get to lab.
Nice to see you.
No, we'll see you guys tonight, okay?
See you later.
May much knowledge be imprinted, love that pen.